So moved.
Second.
Do we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance now?
Yeah, for everybody?
Yeah, it's not coming up. I just came up on mine.
Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, limited to the self.
I'm sorry, I mean, yes.
Do I come over to you, Mary, or do you come over here?
I'll come to you.
Okay.
This time Superintendent is gonna administer the office of oath to the District Clerk.
Right here. You have to raise your right hand. So I, Maria Doncheck.
I, Maria Doncheck.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of District Clerk.
The duties of District Clerk.
Of the Sag Harbor Union Free School District.
The Sag Harbor Union Free School District. Now, this time I'd like to administer the oath to our newly re-elected Board Member Sandy Cruel. Repeat after me. I, Sandy Cruel.
I, Sandy Cruel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support.
I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Board Member.
The duties of Board Member.
Of the Sag Harbor Union Free School District.
Of the Sag Harbor Union Free School District.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Read this to him.
And Alex is on his way, so we'll do him when he gets here.
Yes.
Yeah.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion, ask for a motion to nominate the candidate for the President of the Board of Education.
I nominate Sandy Cruel. She's done a great job leading this ship for a while now, and I'm here for another one.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Are there any other nominations? If there be none but four, our Board Members, would you please vote in electing Sandy Cruel as the next Board President for the 2023-24 school year? Raise your hands.
Mine.
Mine. That unanimous. I, Sandy Cruel.
I, Sandy Cruel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Board President.
The duties of Board President.
Of the Sag Harbor Union Free School District.
Of the Sag Harbor Union Free School District. Thank you. Not easy to lose electing.
Hold on. So at this time, I turn the board over to Sandy.
Great, thank you. I have a motion to nominate a candidate for Vice President for the Board of Education.
I'll nominate Jordana.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any other nominees for Vice President? No? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I just want to say that Jordana has been a great asset to me in my last year along with Brian when Brian was out of town or whatever, so I'm very excited to be working with you this year. Yes.
I, Jordana Sobi.
I, Jordana Sobi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
The duties of Board Vice President.
The duties of Board Vice President.
At the Sag Harbor Union Free School District.
At the Sag Harbor Union Free School Districts.
Thank you. If it's solemnly. Wonderful, thank you.
I'm going to move to public input number one. Rules for public input number one is any group or organization wishing to address the Board must identify a single spokesperson. Speakers have up to three minutes. Speakers will address remarks to the President. Speakers will conduct themselves in a civil and respectful manner. Speakers will not address personnel or students. If a speaker wants to speak a second time, they must speak at public input two. The Board President has the right to discontinue public input at any time. Is there anyone that would like to come up and speak at public input one? Please sign your name on the, at the podium and print it.
It'll be right here.
It just printed, no signing? Oh, okay. Um, my name's Nicole Lipp. I have a incoming kindergarten here. We're very excited about coming into the elementary school. We moved here specifically for Sag Harbor. My husband's worked out here for a long time. I was working and living in the city. We were gonna have a baby and we decided we wanted to raise him out here in Sag Harbor and have him go through the public school system. Um, we are on actually, we're in the village, but we're on the East Hampton side of the village. There is some rumors going around currently in social media and amongst neighbors talking about redistricting and things have been brought up about at some point potentially the East Hampton side of the village being broken off for, you know, people have been floating various reasons why this would occur. Some having to do with the Wayne Scott situation, et cetera. And then the East Hampton side of the village, those kids would go to East Hampton, and obviously this got me a little bit upset and anxiety ridden. And so somebody was saying, well, the only way you can find out any truths of this is to go to the Board and ask. I've never stood up in front of the Board. I've, you know, got a five-year-old. So here I am. So I just wanted to say, you know, is there anything, any truth to any of these rumors?
Great. Well, answer your question if you'd like to go back and take a seat.
Sure.
I'll be more than happy to answer.
Thank you.
First of all, welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome to address it unless you want me to.
Aye. Yeah, if you wanna.
So I'm aware of these, the social media posts and some related discussion, but there's been nothing that's come to the Board of Education's level regarding what you referenced.
Okay.
So from our perspective, it's just a rumor.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would just, I would just also add, like, you should never feel like you need to wait two weeks to get an answer and come to a Board meeting. You can always email Red Knuckles with any question like that.
I didn't know how to.
Yeah, no, of course.
But anyway.
I just wanna put it out there for anybody that's listening that's, you know.
Let's not go back and forth, but yeah.
Okay.
Great.
I just, unfortunately, you're not the only person that perbed this wrong.
Okay.
So as far as that's concerned, there's no, there's no real truth as far as any of us know.
Okay.
And I highly doubt that whatever happened, so.
Thank you. Am I, I don't.
Oh, yes.
It's husband birthday.
Great. Anyone else for public input number one? Good, anybody? Great. Jordana. Don't think of her if it's anybody.
Not sure the name, it's Dean.
I am here.
Right?
I have my hand up.
Yes, go ahead.
You can hear me? Okay, thank you. My name is Dawn Smith. I'm inquiring about the hot lunch program that was brought up many times last spring and reiterated very passionately for by Nada Barry at the May Marsden Street Community Forum. And I would think that this would qualify as a top priority for both the Board of Education and certainly for the community. And if it's not on the agenda tonight, when will it be on the agenda to be approved and what work has been done specifically in the last month or so? And when can we expect to have some movement on this? Has it been looked at? Has it been worked on? Where does it stand? Thank you. I think hungry children, hungry students, undernourished students should be a top priority for voters, for the community, and certainly for the Board of Education. Thanks so much.
I'm gonna address it.
Sure.
So, thank you for the, for the comment. I just wanna correct the record that it seems as though there's, in your statement, a belief that some students are going hungry or that they're not being provided with nourishment during the school day. And that's not the case. Mr. Malone, we have roughly, is it eighty students? Who access, sometimes more, who access our lunch program, which is coordinated out of this building. And all of the students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch are able to access the food that's provided through the program. There have been several community members who brought up the absence of a hot lunch program. And what we said at the time was that there were some logistical concerns. Those logistical concerns remain. I do know that you have a meeting scheduled. I'm not sure if it already took place with.
On Wednesday with Ms. Barry.
With Ms. Barry. And you'll discuss some of those logistical concerns in more depth. But, you know, this is an issue that, that is important, but I just wanna make sure it's framed correctly in that it's, it's not a situation where people think we're not providing food. We're providing it, and there are some people who would like it to be hot, which is different than I think what was just articulated.
I would also just add that I think as of before three or four years ago, there was no lunch program in the elementary school other than for people who couldn't access free and reduced lunch. So for, I don't know how many years, everybody, as long as there's been a program for free and reduced lunch, everybody who needed it has accessed it. Prior to three or four years ago, there wasn't a lunch program for kids in the elementary school beyond those kids who needed free and reduced lunch. The Board, the administrators, the elementary school, the lunch personnel worked really hard over the last few years to create a lunch program. So there have been huge improvements over the last three or four years. So this most recent request for hot lunch really came as a surprise, I think, to many of us. It's well taken and we're gonna look into it. But I would suggest that folks who are concerned about the current lunch program, maybe like Nada Barry visited with Mr. Malone, anyone that has specific questions about its adequacy should actually probably try to learn more about it. And we're, of course, open to learning more about why concerns about the temperature of lunch is something that people are concerned about.
Because we're absolutely hitting all the nutritional spots in our, in our free and reduced and our grab-and-go lunches at the elementary school.
Yeah.
Making it hot does not necessarily make it nutritious.
Yeah, and the grab-and-go lunches have been a big hit.
Yes, and they are, and they're actually very well done. Lots of colors, lots of vegetables, lots of fruit. It's very well done. So hot doesn't always necessarily mean nutritious. And there is no child in our district that has ever or will ever go hungry.
Yeah, I would just like to say that that, that kind of misinformation is the most frustrating, horrible, dishonest statements I can imagine hearing from the community. Every child in this school is fed, if they need to be fed.
Yeah.
So those people need to like.
Great. We're gonna finish public input. Okay, no more. And is there anyone else? Great. Oh, well, return, return would be at public input number two. Thank you.
Hello? Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
You can hear me? This is Janice Dono. I wanted to point out a couple of things and I had a couple of questions. One, if you email questions to the Board, those are then not in the public record, and I think it's important to ask things such as the East Hampton redistricting question, so that is made public, just for the record. Two, I think you are hearing from the public that a hot lunch program is really important. And every time we ask about this, we get attacked and called, you know, names and told that no child is going hungry. Well, that may be, but it's not hot food, and some of these children are not getting hot food in a day. So there is a real and growing concern from the public that I think you might want to be more open to listening to about it being a hot lunch program. My questions are these, and I wanna make sure that tonight it is understood that these are questions, since I was cut off last time and told that I had not formulated my comments in a question form. So I asked about the contract today for the consultant for the wet lab. And Jeff replied that Mary wouldn't be able to provide it before this meeting, but I see on the agenda thirteen-one or thirteen-three that it is up for approval tonight, and I would like to ask the question, can you not do this in the future? Because it is not really proper protocol to approve things that the public has not been able to see the contracts for, and I believe that you are required to provide those contracts. I also, in your comment back to me, Jeff, and this is a question as well, noticed that you said that you were consulting with parents, teachers, administrators, and the BOE, but there are no members of the public in that group. And I am asking you to add members of the public that don't fit into any of those four categories as well. So I am hopeful that those have now been asked as questions and you could address them. Thank you.
So I can address the first question. My understanding is that the protocol is that when a contract is approved,
It's confidential.
It's confidential up until that point, and then it remains confidential. I did do my best to answer some of the questions that you had earlier today via email. With regard to the community comment, I agree with you a hundred percent. What I had said to you in the written correspondence today was that I had a group of people comprised of teachers, administrators, Board of Education members, and parents had visited, maybe I wasn't clear, had visited a wet lab in Southampton to get some context to see what was possible. But certainly, as with any kind of capital improvement in the district, the community's gonna be certainly informed and have an opportunity to ask questions before we move forward with anything.
That's true. Okay, any other online? Okay, great. Mary, would you like to give the oath to our new elected Board Member, please?
Maybe just stand there, Mr. Creaseman.
Okay.
Can you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Alex Creaseman.
I, Alex Creaseman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
Faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Board Member.
Duties of Board Member.
At the Sag Harbor Union Free School District.
As the Sag Harbor Union Free School District. Thank you.
Back, Alex.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the Superintendent's report, Mr. Nichols.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you a brief update. I know that on security, we had discussed over the course of the year that we were, that we had, the district had hired a consultant to do an audit of the school district's security. That audit was completed and submitted to the Board of Education in June. For pretty obvious reasons, we're not able to hear specific details of that audit. But there are certain elements of the audit that I can share with the public, and one of those is that we are going to be addressing our staffing differently, starting in 2023-24. So the Board of Education had approved, given me the go-ahead to advertise for GARS for the twenty-three, twenty-four year with a a different salary and benefit structure. We had sent that out via Parent Square to let parents know about that development, and that advertisement will be placed in this week's paper, and we're hoping to get a number of applicants, and our goal is to be staffed and ready to go for the upcoming school year by the beginning of August. Hopefully have everybody hired by August fourth. Is the meeting August fourteenth, Mary?
Yes, it is.
So that's the goal.
Great. Any questions on anybody on that?
Well, thanks, Greg.
Yeah, I'm glad it's done, and I'm glad we're gonna increase that and work hard to improve our security system, both internally and externally. That's great. Okay, so this is a pretty big agenda tonight. It really is housekeeping, as most of you know. We do this every year. There's not really much that changes in this portion of the agenda. It just seems like a lot. So when we take them all, I just want the public to understand that this is strictly housekeeping. The Board of Education goes through these. You're all pretty, pretty, actually very familiar with all of them. So may I have a motion for consent agenda items eight point one through fifteen point eleven, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Nope. Okay, Mary, would you open the voting, please?
It's open.
Great.
That unanimous.
Great. Items for discussion. So the only items I wanna put on is we need to circle in August for our goal meetings. We do have two board meetings. If we wanna try to wrap them up with those, we can do that, or do we wanna do separate? I think we can pretty much wrap it up in those personally. What's everybody's thoughts?
I think we can include it.
I think you can.
Anything?
Yeah. Oh, so I do.
Okay. January twenty-fourth is our Board Retreat.
I mean, July.
I mean, I'm sorry, July. Don't mind me. July. So we'll be here for that, and we already had, we discussed, you know, that is a, every year Dan will not, will be here for that, actually. So.
We'll swear him in then.
Yeah, we'll swear him in then. He's out of the country, so we'll do the Board Retreat then, and it got back in August with both and everything else, so. If that's okay with everybody, I'll have Mary put that on the agenda and out there and we'll be good with that. Any other items for discussions? Nope? All right. That's gonna return us then to public input two. Is there anyone in the audience for public input number two? Same rules apply from public input one to input two. Yep? Okay, Scott?
You two unmute yourself and then you can go ahead and speak.
Yeah?
This man, you can go ahead and talk. You unmute your mic.
Well, you know what? I would like, I didn't realize my hand was still up, but I do have another follow-up. Wasn't the hot lunch program initially planned with the Stella Morris School, and what happened there? And I'd like to know when the date is that you're meeting with Nada Barry, because some of us, I think, would like to attend that. How do we know when that will happen? Thank you.
You wanna address the Stella Morris piece?
The Stella Morris piece, the kitchen is downstairs in the basement. It is not completed. And it was going to be for several different things. It was going to serve as a hub to serve both schools. Unfortunately, there's not enough room for a cafeteria at the elementary school. And that's a whole nother can of worms. The Educational Facilities Committee that does have teachers, parents, and Board Members on, deals with on a monthly basis. So we do look at that. It was not completed. It's very close to completion, but at this point, it, it, we just have it.
Needs a few things.
Yeah, it's really very close. I pers, and it was going to be used as a, almost like a culinary project for people to come in and use.
And so it's one of our.
One of our options to use that. But the cafeteria at the elementary school that we had in two thousand and one lasted for all about, what, Mr. Malone, maybe two months? Like, literally, and then we needed the space back.
Yeah, and then I would say with regards to the, the second part of your comment question, if you have a desire to sit down with Mr. Malone and ask questions, I suggest you reach out to him directly.
Yes.
But I don't think it would be appropriate to, you know, to attach people to a meeting that was scheduled between Mr. Malone and a community member.
I agree. Is that all we have, Scott? Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep. I just wanted to point out, Jeff, that in your email to me today, you said that you would have Mary send the contract for the consultant for the wet lab by tomorrow. So that kind of contradicts what you just said. That is actually a question, why the contradiction? And I still would like to ask that you not approve contracts that the public has not had any input on, you know, to this point. So those are my questions.
I think I can address this.
Yeah, sure.
So I think, Janice, the way school districts operate, there are a number of contracts that we have to approve on an ongoing basis, and if they were subject to public review, it would prohibit the district from operating day to day. Examples include services for special education, services for transportation, all these types of things, and if we had to go to the public before each and every one of these was approved, the train would stop on the tracks, if you will, and this is common operating procedure in New York State public school districts, not just Sag Harbor.
Yours, the contract valid?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, I just, I think the question just reflects a fundamental misunderstanding of how school districts operate.
Yeah, I would just add, just if you were to have a contract that was not approved in the public space, then you'd have, and they weren't approved, you'd have incorrect contracts floating around as a public record. So the idea is they're kept confidential until approved, and then once approved, they do become public. So when Mr. Nichols said that he would send you something tomorrow, that was under the assumption it would be approved today. So now that it has been approved, it will be made, go, go from e- executive material to public material. He will send it to you like promised, but it also will be available on board docs. So you don't even have to ask for it. You can always search for it on board docs. Anything that's been approved is available on board docs.
Yeah, and, and just as per the correspondence today, uh Janice, the, the, the history here is that the district has had an interest in expanding its science facilities, and one of those specific interests was a wet lab. And so the district had visited uh or representatives of the district had visited at least two other schools that have labs. Um, and before going to the architects, we thought it prudent to have someone who had uh experience working in the beginning stages of design, serve that role here in Sag Harbor before we got the architects involved, and that's the contract that the board approved tonight. The person who will be um providing those services to our district has actually provided that very service to several other districts successfully. So that's why we're moving in that direction.
I think she just needs to understand that the district is doing this due diligence.
Exactly.
In creating program for students in the district. And if we have to do what you were saying, go to the public every single time, we would have no education in this district. So.
Thanks.
No obligation.
Uh, is that it, Scott? Got it. Great, thank you. Uh, that closes the public meeting. May I have a motion to convene into executive session?
Salute. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And uh we're going to executive session to discuss contracts. When we come out, we'll just be closing the public meeting and there'll be no action taken. Thank you.